Okay, we'll go ahead and call this regular city council meeting to order. And for tonight's invocation, we have Pastor Dick Wamsley of the Tattletale Christian Church.
O God, Father in heaven, we thank you for the privilege that we have of being able to invoke your presence among us here tonight, and for your wisdom as well, to help in the process of decision-making for the well-being of citizens in Tattletale. Thank you also, Father, for the men and women in various departments, for the police officers, firefighters, and the emergency personnel who are on duty 24/7. Thank you, God, for their willingness and your commitment to that. Also, Father, we pray tonight for those in Oklahoma who are suffering the results of some terrible tornadoes. We pray for the responders there to be able to help those who have great need, and also, God, those who will come later to help them through the difficult times. We pray, God, as we look to the future, that we'll always be trusting you, allowing you to work in your time, and also, Father, to be united as one tonight, working toward making Tattletale a place for all, in Jesus' name.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Larry Bud.
Here.
Sean Bertle.
Here.
Ernie Dorchinez.
Here.
Rob Heberlin.
Here.
Bruce Jones.
Here.
Ray Coontz.
Here.
Martin Voda.
Here.
Earl Walters.
Here.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Okay, I'll let you read for yourself the minutes there. We've got a minutes of about nine meetings, and I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes as listed. Okay, second Alderman Bertle. Discussion or comments? Hearing and roll call.
Ernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Okay, moving on to discussions and our motions to approve, adopt, and/or deny, and/or table, and/or amend, and/or refer to an appropriate committee in whole and part the following listed motions or ordinances or resolutions. Before we get started here, I would like to say that yesterday afternoon, I had the pleasure of attending a wonderful recognition ceremony held in honor of Pastor Wamsley at the Tattletale Christian Church. And it was very apparent while I sat there that he is a very well-respected man within this community and very loved a member of his church, and he's done a wonderful job for the city and for his church. And so I'd like to take a minute tonight just to officially recognize Dick for everything he's done for the city over the years and make a presentation. Dick, if you would, just kind of meet me out front here. I've got a plaque to present to you.
The plaque says, "In recognition of his years of service to this community, providing guidance not only to parishioners at this church, but to all the residents of this city, and to thank him for the countless hours of civic service that he has given and supported a wide variety of charitable projects and causes." To give that plaque to Chief Richard Wamsley, Senior.
Okay, moving on. False alarm. Toast at the high rise. All right, you know, many Americans celebrate Armed Forces Day annually on the third Saturday of May. Now, that would have been this past Saturday, and I'm ashamed to admit that I myself was not even aware of it. Like many citizens of this country, I'm guilty of taking for granted the tremendous sacrifices that our young men and women serving in the military make for us. Well, thank goodness there's some people out there that don't take their service for granted, and tonight I'd like to honor one young lady who has taken it upon herself to do what she can to ensure that these men and women are not forgotten. Rebecca Wiggins, would you please stand? Can you come forward with your mother here?
Yeah.
I've got a proclamation for you.
This proclamation says, "Whereas Rebecca Wiggins has worked diligently for years sending care packages and letters to our soldiers stationed overseas, and whereas Rebecca has worked with her mother, Kate Haynes, to establish the organization known as Soldiers Angels, a volunteer-led, non-profit organization with the mission to provide aid and comfort to men and women of the United States Army, Marines, Navy, Air Force, Coast Guard, and their families. And whereas in conjunction with the Soldiers Angels Organization, Rebecca has adopted 25 soldiers over the past four years, providing all of them with the peace of mind they come from knowing that they are not forgotten and that someone cares about them. And whereas Rebecca has raised $7,000 over the past year for Project Valier, Valier IT, which provides much-needed technology and voice, such as voice-activated laptops, to soldiers who have been wounded. And whereas Rebecca continues to support our soldiers by educating others about their needs by speaking and giving multimedia presentations to local organizations and groups. And whereas Rebecca has made the citizens of Tattletale proud by being chosen as the American Red Cross 2013 Youth Hero. Now therefore, I, Greg Brotherton, Mayor of the City of Tattletale, do hereby proclaim May 20th, 2013, as Rebecca Wiggins' Day, and the City of Tattletale, Illinois. I urge all citizens to offer their sincere thanks for the convinced job she has done supporting our soldiers. Rebecca, thank you so much."
And one quick thank you. I don't know if you folks have noticed it yet. It's still a process in the work, but Mr. Earl Walters has been working like crazy since last Friday, and all day today, trying to re-landscape the outside of the municipal building. I mean, he's had his shovel out there in his hand every time I drive by. He's sweating like crazy, and if it had not been for me feeling so poorly, and of course my allergy to physical labor, I'd been out there helping. But I do want to thank you for that. Okay, we've got the important stuff over. Now we've got an oath of office for Ernie Dorchinez, so I'd ask Pam Peabody to please help us with that.
Do we get a vote on this?
Yes.
Motion to table, maybe, would that work?
I declare today is the first day of casual dress.
Do you solemnly swear that you support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of all the men of Ward Three according to the best of your ability? Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on. I'm proud to say that the City of Tattletale now has two new firemen, and I'd ask the city clerk to help me swearing them in. We'll start off with the new fireman Kirk Rainey. Kirk, would you come up with your family or whoever you'd like?
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of a fireman according to the best of your ability?
Okay, now I'd ask new fireman Alfred Fox to come forward with his family.
Do you solemnly swear that you support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of a fireman according to the best of your ability?
Okay, moving on. We've got some appointments that have to be made, and there'll be a lot of them over the next few meetings, but we start with the four of them tonight. First of all, I'd like to ask the aldermen, I'd entertain a motion to approve my appointment of Jackie Nation to a two-year term on the fire pension board. Second, Alderman Walters, second by Alderman Heberlin. Discussion or comment? Hearing and roll call.
Bob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Yeah, you want to swear them in one at a time?
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of a member of the fire's pension board according to the best of your ability?
Okay, moving on. Terry France has retired, but we're not going to let her get away with that, so I would entertain a motion to approve my appointment of Terry France to the police pension board for a term of two years and the library board for a term of two years. Alderman Bertle.
Second.
Second Alderman Coontz. Discussion or comment? Hearing and roll call.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchinez.
Yes. Motion passes eight to zero. Terry?
Do you solemnly swear that you support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of a member of the police pension board and the Tattletale library board to which you were appointed according to the best of your ability?
I will.
I would now entertain a motion to approve my appointment of Barbara Grabner Kearns to the tree board for a three-year term. Alderman Bertle. Second by who?
Heberlin.
Alderman Heberlin, okay. Discussion or comment? Hearing and roll call.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Okay, Alderman Walters, second by Alderman Coontz. Discussion or comment? Hearing and roll call.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Present.
Sean Bertle.
Present.
Ernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero with a present.
I'm glad it's present.
It's going right in front of my house. I'm going to take a hit for this one.
Oh, no. Already.
All right. It must be nice. Mr. Hauser, okay, the planning commission's here, so we'd ask Mr. Hauser to please address the council.
Your Honor, the receiving and planning and zoning commission was privileged to hear the resoning request from Kirby family, Gloria and Joe Kirby, to rezone from residential R1 to commercial C1, property located at 300 North Elevator Street, AKA the West School property in Tattletale. There were a lot of comments on both sides, questions, good questions by the aldermen this time.
We're trying.
After a whole lot of discussion, the planning and zoning commission chose to recommend to the Board of Aldermen about to table
Yes.
an issue for a suitable time to give the Kirbys an opportunity to revise their submission and request, which would be made in a later date to, once again, the planning and zoning commission. It's something which has a tendency to conform a little more with some of the requests by the governors. Things like the work for both parties, we hope it does.
I would ask the city attorney a question on this. They've got a motion to table, so do we just not take action?
We would not take action.
Just not take action at this point?
They're not making a recommendation to you.
Okay, thank you.
The next thing on our agenda was a consideration of a suggestion or recommendation by the ordinance committee to revise the lock bits in the R2 districts. You have a special statement to recognize to you that the planning and zoning commission refused.
All right. With that said, I'd entertain a motion.
I would like to make the motion, we accept the planning commission's recommendation.
Second, Alderman Dorchinez. Discussion or comment?
Just one comment.
Go ahead.
I'd like to thank George Calvert. He, I'll tell you what, for the guy that takes a lot of guff in this town, he sure does a good job at what he does, and he's always continually looking out for, he's always continually looking out for the citizens and the council as a whole. So I'd just like to give a shout-out to George tonight.
Good job, George.
Good job.
It looks like that he gets so much criticism, he didn't have, except a pat on the back.
So you're saying you so what you reap? Is that what you're saying? Okay. All right, any other comments? Roll call, please.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
We thank all of you for the good job you've done for us. Thank you. Next, we have a motion to close Cherokee Street, going south from Gandy Street to Second Street, and to close First Street at Gandy Street from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM for the Memorial Day services on Monday, May 27th, 2013. Walters, second Alderman Bertle, go ahead with your comment. Alderman Walters.
Comment, gentlemen, this was brought to our attention. At the chairman of the street service committee, too late to put it on my agenda, so that's when I asked the mayor and city clerk to go ahead and put it on the council agenda. This is something that we do every year for the activities that we have for that particular holiday.
Okay, any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Okay, next, I'd entertain a motion to approve my appointment of Mike Cruz as the acting fire chief. Now, this will be effective May 13th, 2013, at a salary of $58,918.34. A motion by Alderman Dorchinez, second by Alderman Bertle. Discussion or comments? Hearing and roll call.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Okay, I think that brings to city attorney updates. Mr. Romano, would you like to address the council?
Gentlemen, just to give you a brief update on the pending lawsuit from Sivers Pilvers against the city. I have been contacted since we last spoke at the county level. I have now received an email document, if you recall, your insurance carrier, Travelers, has appointed counsel to represent the city in this matter. In a discussion with that particular attorney, I suggested that it would not be necessary. I did not think that I actually participated in my appearance in that case to behalf of the city to keep the cost down. He agreed with that. So there's been an order entered by the judge, a substitute, your former city attorney, and replaced it by Howard Small, the attorney that's been retained by your company. They've also, the motions that were filed, you don't have to file any responsive pleadings until June 28th. And the May 30th setting, that was where the court would get together and set a scheduling conference, if you know how this case is done, proceed time-wise, that has been postponed indefinitely. The reason being is that I think your counsel and the opposing counsel on your side are trying to make an effort to try to see if there's any way to resolve this case short of actually going to trial. I've been, the mayor and I have been in conversation with him, providing some documentation for his assistance for that, and so that's all a matter of public record, is what I'm telling you here now. And I've been assured by counsel that as things progress, I will be getting email transmissions from him under attorney-client privilege. I will afford those as attorney-client privilege in there, and they can be disseminated to you folks as well to keep you up to date. So the other matter I want to briefly discuss is that there was a number of issues that were good issues, good questions raised at committee level about some things that you might want me to look at. I'd be happy to do that. I would suggest that maybe the mayor could give me some direction of what items that you want me to do, and then I'll go from there out of your direction. Okay? And that's all I have today.
Okay. Any questions or comments for the city attorney?
Just a comment, John.
Alderman Walters.
I'd like to welcome city attorney Rocky Romano back on board.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Anything else? Okay, moving on to mayor updates. I put out to the aldermen there, I got a letter today, and actually I'd heard it on the news last week, House Bill 62, and it's just being put through the legislature, or trying to be put through the legislature. And basically what this does is it, if you have a prison within your municipality, you do not get to count the inmates for your head count for census purposes and the benefit you would receive from that head count. It hasn't completely passed yet, but the letter is asking us to contact our representatives and ask them to vote against this. In this letter, it basically just says it's a grab by Cook County, and I can see why they would jump to that conclusion, and it's probably a correct one, so I just bring that to your attention. Alderman Dorchinez.
I think we caused all this problem.
I think you probably did, Alderman Dorchinez.
You know Mr. Huntley? Ed Huntley?
I think they've nicknamed Mr. Dorchinez Bill.
Stop him in some way. All right, I think, I know I received, and I think several aldermen also received, a very nice thank you card from the 11/6 Student Ministries at the Calvary Baptist Church, and I'll just quickly read mine. It says, "Dear Mr. Brotherton, you do not have, you know, you do not have this happen often enough, but thank you for your hard work and dedication to our community. Your time and service towards helping others is greatly appreciated. We thank you again for making our community a better place to live." And so, it is nice to get that every once in a while, so I'm sure the other aldermen feel the same way. And Ernie, the fact you didn't get one should tell you something.
I framed mine.
The only other thing I have is just to let people know, on Sunday, June 9th, the community garden at the Davis Memorial Church is having kind of an opening day out there from 2:00 to 4:00. And so if you get a chance and are doing, not doing anything at the Sunday afternoon, that's a good place to stop by and cheer them on for what they've been able to do out there, and I think the whole community will benefit from that as it moves forward. All right, moving on to committee reports. We have discussions and our motions to approve, adopt, and/or deny, and/or table, and/or amend, and/or refer to an appropriate committee in whole and part the matters regarding the following subject matters discussed at the committee level. And we'll start off with the finance committee.
Motion to contribute $3,000 to the Optimus Club for the 4th of July fireworks display, with 2,500 coming from the Hotel Motel tax to help promote tourism, and 500, or 500 coming from the general fund, with an additional assistance from the Hotel Motel Fund if absolutely necessary to meet the three-year commitment.
Second. Alderman Bud makes the motion, second by Alderman Jones. Discussion or comments? Alderman Walters.
Again, I apologize, gentlemen, for missing that meeting. It's very rare that I miss a meeting, and I did mention this at the last meeting that was held. I'm a little concerned that we're looking at putting ourselves in line for additional dollars for the next three years. It says if absolutely necessary. My concern is that I think the Optimus Club should be at the forefront of getting the donations and the money for this, and then come to us. It appears that the way it's worded, that it doesn't put a very large incentive on them to collect the money upfront, they're going to come back to us and say, well, you need to make up the difference. So I'm a little concerned with this, gentlemen.
Thank you.
If I might, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Heberlin.
There is a large onus put on the Optimus Club. If they don't come through in three years, we probably will cease to have a 4th of July fireworks. But I think that we need to do everything that we can to try to maintain that level of celebration out there. But again, if the Optimus Club does not come through, perhaps the celebration will be gone after three years. Thank you.
I think it's one of those difficult things to measure, you know, again, we have something like that, and you never know, there's, you know, we don't know what that brings in. We don't know if that brings in, you know, $25,000 to the community during that weekend. We just don't know, so I certainly think it's a good thing, and I hope somehow we can keep it going. Alderman Bertle.
I'd have you as Alderman Heberlin, you know. We make a lot of decisions up here. We spend a lot of money on things that sometimes the public don't agree with, sometimes I don't agree with it, sometimes other aldermen don't agree with it. And this is something like the mayor states, you can't put a dollar figure on it, because if you could, it would be easier to vote on. But I think as the public as a whole wants to see the fireworks, I think it's a popular event, I think people come, not only from Tattletale, but come around the community to see it. I think this is something that we should spend, our Hotel Motel, it's a classic example of what you can spend that money on. So we should spend that money on the fireworks, and hopefully the onus would be on the Optimus Club to put forth their best effort to come up with the funds that they said that they probably generate, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Heberlin.
Just an additional comment on that. We, and we are putting the onus on the Optimus Club, but really, we are challenging the citizens of this community to support their effort if they want the celebration to continue. So really, we should be asking them to pony up some of these funds.
And I think indirectly, that's exactly what we're doing, yes. I think we're going to need their help doing that. I will say, and before we vote here, just to give you some good news, Simec, the company that did the electric aggregation for us, they have come forward with a $1,000 donation towards that purpose, so that helps. All right, let's have a roll call.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Motion to approve the transfer of $50,000 from the general fund to the water fund for the repayment of the water fund loan.
Second, Alderman Bertle. Discussion or comments on this? Alderman Dorchinez.
Every time we do this, this is big, and if it wasn't for Sean Bertle's brilliant idea to do this, it wouldn't have come close to what we've reduced that debt to. And eventually it's going to be paid off, and so I'll give kudos to Alderman Bertle, and I hope to remember to do that every time. And we I know he doesn't like me to keep telling him, but, uh...
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Motion to forward the FY 2013, 2014 water, safety, police, fire, street, sewer, garbage, and MFT, FY 2013, 2014 budgets to the city treasurer for further refinement, but, along with that, a motion, gentlemen, I would like to remove the fire budget from the motion and vote on it separately, so that if no one has any objections to this motion, forward the water, safety, police, street, sewer, garbage, and MFT to the city treasurer for further refinement.
Okay, I have that motion, second by Alderman Heberling, discussion or comments? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion passes.
I would like to make a motion to forward the FY 2013, 2014 fire budget to the city treasurer for further refinement, with the cost for the ladder truck removed from the budget, but included in the appropriation ordinance, which is the city's legal spending limit.
Second. Second by Alderman Heberling, discussion or comment on this? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion passes.
A motion to forward the FY 2013, 2014 health and safety, fire, and police commission audit, and ESDA FY 13, 2014 budgets to the city treasurer for further redefine, refinement.
Okay, you got a second on that?
Second.
Second by Alderman Voda, discussion or comments? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion passes. You got a second on that?
Second.
Second by Alderman Voda, discussion or comments? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion passes. Moving on to street and sewer committee.
Thank you, Your Honor, uh, motion to approve the request of the Optimus Club to solicit funds at the corner of West Main Cross and Webster Street for Flag Day on June the 14th to help support the annual fireworks celebration.
Second, Alderman Burdell, discussion or comment? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion passes.
Motion to approve the request of the tree board chairman, Ron DeCraff, to attend the ecology and practice of establishing an eighty-volt seminar on the October 16th in Petersburg at a cost of $125.
Second, Alderman Burdell, discussion or comment? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion passes.
My last motion, uh, is a motion to approve the landscaping around the municipal building at a cost not to exceed $1,500 using proceeds from one month of the video gaming proceeds. I'd like to make that a motion with a comment.
Okay, just second by Alderman Coontz, go ahead with your comment, Alderman Walters.
Thank you, Your Honor, I certainly do appreciate you, gentlemen, having, uh, the confidence in me to go ahead and, with this project, I would ask that you please look at some of the improvements that I've made out there, I'm not done yet, and I'd like to thank Superintendent Wyeth for allowing me to use two of his, uh, summer of college, uh, young men to help me with this, I've got one more day to spend on that, I think I'll have the entire project done, uh, for your cruise, and, uh, let me know what you think of it.
Okay, Alderman Burdell.
I didn't know if there was anybody that wanted to include the city mayor on that to...
Sick, he's allergic.
Yep, and give some assistance with labor on, on the municipal...
Looking for all the help I can get out there.
Alderman Coontz.
Ray should be a favor.
Just during public facilities, I want to thank Alderman Walters, why he's done out there, and, uh, I know that's a thing that he said he loves doing, and has done a good job at it, and, uh, I've been by there, and, and I haven't seen him once fall asleep, so.
Good, good. Any other comments? Hearing done, uh, roll call.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Brings us to emergency services committee.
Thank you, Your Honor, we had, uh, two motions come out of emergency services, the first one was motion to allow Police Chief Herb Street to order five vests for the police department at a cost of $3,918.50 from Ray O'Hern.
O'Hearn.
O'Hearn, yeah.
Court ready, I'd like to make that in form of motion.
Second, Alderman Heberling, discussion or comment? Hearing done, roll call.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Second motion, the old, motion was to allow Police Chief Herb Street to proceed with applying for the 2013 cops hiring grant application, I'd like to make that in form of motion.
Okay, good second on that. Second by Alderman Heberling, discussion or comments? Hearing done, roll call.